From Richmond?
Yeah.
Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, Town Council Workshop Meeting for the Town of Southern Shores. If everyone would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If you'll now join me for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, are there any amendments to our agenda or is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We just have, I believe, one general public comment. If you'll just come up to the podium and tell us your name and your address and we look forward to listening.
You probably can all hear me.
Need to use your microphone.
Yeah, the microphone will help in the, in terms of recording.
Okay.
That's okay.
You're used to us, huh?
You've got some people standing behind you.
Good morning. I'm Jan Collins and I work with the Dementia Friendly Coalition and I'm here to talk to you about a community endeavor. You all may have seen our Purple Seahorse on restaurants and businesses around town. The Purple Seahorse is a decal that identifies a restaurant or business that has been trained to become dementia friendly. The Dementia Friendly Coalition is a result of a two thousand and thirteen community health assessment that was done and it revealed that people with dementia and that their at-home caregivers needed more support. The Healthy Carolinians, in partnership with the Outer Banks Task Force, was formed in March of two thousand and fourteen. As an outgrowth of that partnership, the Outer Banks Hospital initiated a dementia-friendly volunteer program, which led to the Outer Banks being the first dementia-friendly hospital in all of North Carolina. The hospital is now training other hospitals to achieve that designation. We here on the Outer Banks have nineteen dementia-friendly restaurants and ten dementia-friendly trained businesses. We have a support group for caregivers and one-on-one support entirely staffed by volunteers. We transitioned from the Dementia Task Force to the Outer Banks Dementia Friendly Coalition in June of two thousand and twenty, when we became a five oh one C three charitable organization. We have Julie Hannah from the Kill Devil Hills Police Department who heads up our Project Lifesaver, a twenty-four-hour locator service using electronic transponders. We have Gail Sinesso of Gem Day Services as a contributing member of our caregiver support services. Last fall, we held our first Love to Remember Tennis Tournament, raising over forty thousand dollars. The community realized the need to help our caregivers. With these funds, we partnered with Sheila Davies of the Dare County Health and Human Services and we are opening on Monday, March twenty-first, our Day Out Program for caregivers, which is entirely free at the REC Center. Every Monday from nine thirty to one, caregivers can drop off their loved ones and we will engage them until they are picked up. Going forward, our goal is to educate the public at large about the growing need for the community to accept and support both those afflicted with the disease and assist their loved ones who provide the care. Along that, we want people to know that we are a place for caregivers to come and find support and resources when caring for an individual that is struggling with memory loss. We have educational conferences related to dementia support givers. This month, we have Dr. O'Krawby coming from the Eastern Virginia Medical School from Virginia Beach to speak and that's being held on March thirty-first at Duck Woods and we're trying to get the public aware of that. We have extensive local agency and organizational contact information and we've established a card to, as a handout and I will leave some here back on the table if you know of anyone. Our biggest need is to reach as many people as possible to let them know who we are and where we are. And what we're doing now is going out to all the towns to explain exactly what we do and see if people can spread the word. We continue to provide education and training for our businesses and our restaurants and so that we can become one of the first dementia-friendly communities in North Carolina. And again, just pass on this to anybody that you might know that might be in need and I thank you. Any questions?
Jan, where, where's the Day Out Program?
It's at the Dare County REC Center.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you.
Appreciate you sharing the information.
Well done.
Thank you.
Seeing no other public comment, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Pass it over to our town manager, Cliff Ogman. Consideration of pavement maintenance plan bid packet.
Morning.
Morning.
You've got in your packet the Street Improvement Project, Project Twenty-two Pave, which is the first of the CEPI, put together the capital improvement plan and this is the bid package that we plan to put out after your review and comments as early as the end of this week, but depending on your, any concerns you might express, we may delay that a little bit. But I, I just wanted to go through a few things in the packet to point out to you. Right now, the bid due date and time, the bids would be due March thirty-first at ten a.m. We've got a, it's not mandatory, but we have a pre-bid meeting scheduled on March twenty-fourth at ten a.m. If you, if you look in the packet, I wanted to show you the, the bid form, which is on B six. And this is what CEPI, their quantities and estimates that they're asking the, the bidders to bid on. So this, after they've been here and they've looked at all the projects, calculated all the calculations, this is what they're estimating the quantities to be for each one of these lump sum costs. You'll see liquid asphalt at ninety-five tons, patching at four hundred, the different types of patching, anywhere from four hundred to seven hundred and forty tons and then milling asphalt pavement, that's on Sound View at four thousand and fifty, what is it?
Four thousand, really?
So that, that, I just wanted to point this out to show you the, so you could see what type of quantities these bidders will be bidding on.
Is this estimate part of the expense when you had CEPI do this?
Yes.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, and that, that's important to note that in this first year, we have CEPI under a scope of service that includes putting the bid, all the bid, they're pretty much from soup to nuts this first year with us looking over their shoulder.
Okay.
On S P one, the, I wanted to highlight just a few of the project special provisions. You'll see that during all work, they have to maintain, the contractor would have to maintain a minimum of one lane open at all times. The contractor's representative, that would be, that's who CEPI would deal with on a daily basis. Under yard maintenance, I just wanted to point out that, you know, they're required to main, keep everything out of the, or in the right of way. This talks about how they, they make the necessary repairs to existing yards if there is any damage and, and being cautious to, for private property. And under maintaining access, they have to notify the town if, they have to give us forty-eight hours notice if at any time they have to close more than one lane of traffic. Under material sampling and testing, this part of the Q A, Q C, we'll have, as needed, as necessary, we'll have the materials sampled by a third party. If you go over to the next page, S P three, you'll see the contract time that, right now in the contract, they've got until December fifteenth of this year to complete this work. And at the bottom of that, you'll see the day and time restrictions. And I don't, typically, I don't, I don't think we have this big of a period of time where work isn't going on, but it, it would be from two o'clock on Friday afternoon until seven a.m. on Monday morning. And again, and of course not on holidays, but that with, with the appropriate notice, we could amend that. They have, because of the fluctuation of, on the next page, you'll see the price index for the asphalt is five hundred and forty dollars and forty-five cents a ton. There's an adjustment, price adjustment in that, because it fluctuates, everything fluctuates right now, the, but that's in the, in that price adjustments for asphalt binder for plant mix will be made in accordance with Section six twenty of the two thousand and eighteen standard specifications, so that's, that's included. There's a year guarantee on this work. And that, I think are the main things I wanted to point out under that section. The definitions, and if you look under the definitions, you'll see, this is on page, this is Appendix A, the definition for engineer, that's CEPI. If you, when you read through all this, you'll see the engineer or the town representative, that's, and this, for this contract, that would be CEPI. The next thing, go into control of work. All, obviously, all this work, page ten, I think that's probably, I may also, that talks about the, all the work has to pass final inspection before it's accepted, so we'll have CEPI here almost the entirety of the project to, to oversee. And then you've got the typical cross-section, but the, the last thing I wanted to point to is the Appendix C that Sheila had up on the screen, that, these are the location maps. And there's four maps here and this shows the work that's being done on each section of road. And if, on that first map, you'll see on Sound View, that Sound View is
We're trying to find the page.
Oh, yeah. It's at the very back.
Page like one-ten.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sound View is listed as a separate in the, in the project's bid documents because of the nature of the work, it's a mill and repave, so it's, that section of road that, that you see highlighted there would be for the entire portion of that road. And then there's some full-depth patches also. The, the other streets that are listed as green, that's not, that's not the patching, that's not the entire length of the road, but you'll see each one of those dots indicate either a full-depth repair, a mill and overlay, or mill patch, or a surface patch on, and some of these dots are so close together that they won't be two separate patches, it would be one big patch. And if you look, let's see if I get the right page, it's right at the Duck Woods Country Club. I think it's on, is it?
Two-one-eleven.
Is that on map two?
It's map three, I think.
Okay. Okay. There's, there's, that, that's a lot of dots. And during the pre-bid meeting, those that show up will go with CEPI, that, that's one location that they're going to go to before the, the bids come in to kind of, as an example. And also because that's probably an area that's going to need the most attention and that's an area that if there's, there might be three, four, or five dots in that area and, and it may become a bigger project than just the patching. That's a really brief dive into this, there's a ton of information in this bid document. Like I said, the milling overlay, South Awgwood area will be treated different because of the, the condition it's in, so there'll be, that'll be a pre-bid visit. Let's see, oh, and that, the, we've, we think we'll get two bids for sure. We've, we've tried to share some of this information of what we're doing that's different than what we've done in the past. I've also reached out to, you know, trying to look ahead to see if it's a possibility that if, that if we have to rebid this, or if we don't get bids, or things don't follow through like we hope they would, then DOT is, they, they do this type of work in the district and so we might, might be able to piggyback with them as a, kind of a fallback position. So I'll stop and see if you have any questions.
You said you've shared this concept with both the two we normally have.
There's, there's a third one, and it, those two, and then there's a third one that if they can buy the asphalt, this is, this is what they do, but I think there's some reluctance on one of the local bidders because they're concerned about the patching and the aesthetics of it. This isn't, you know, sound, the Sound View job, that's a desirable job, but patching all over town is not, is not, I won't say it's a specialty, but it's what, it's what a contractor does and, and the two contractors here do a lot more than that. And so this, this isn't a highly desirable job to bid on. One, because they're all over town, there's so many places that they have to be.
Yeah, because they'll be having to bid on the total
Right.
scope of it.
Yeah, and, and if at this, we figure we're going to have to rebid it and, because I don't know that we'll get three bids, but, but taking out Sound View and doing the patching separately, taking these two different, maybe bid alternates, could be a possibility as well.
Should we give a heads up to the elementary school in Duck Woods and the fire department just because that patching, that much patching may have some impact on their business?
We will, absolutely. And, and once we get to that point where we're, are letting the contract, then we can work directly with the contractor to find out what part of town they'll be in and when, so we can let, be able to try and share schedule with everyone.
In the past, we've normally notified the residents the work was being done there.
Yeah, but it was a full-depth rebuild.
Oh, I know that. But this is a whole new concept.
Whole new concept.
And that, and that's a whole new concept, I think, for the two or maybe three that we'll end up with. So is there a chance that the contractor can do all the work at once? We gave them till December fifteenth. They can control the window that they do all the work, is that right?
That's, that's right. If we give them that, that's a double-edged sword. If you, if you narrow it, you get a higher cost, the bigger the window, but the longer the disruption.
So they could decide to do it all within thirty days in the whole town if they wanted to on the whole bid?
That's right.
They have that flexibility where all the equipment comes at once, they got the manpower and away they go. Yeah, it's going to, it's going to depend on their workload. Right, yeah, so. So if the bid comes in higher than what we've allocated, what we think it should be, I mean, I know it's a bid or what we have in the budget, maybe that's a better term, we go back and adjust or?
Go back and adjust.
Assess what?
Can reduce scope.
Reduce scope, yeah.
And we'll lay all that out for you. If the bid comes in higher, we can either allocate the money somehow or we can scale back the project, where it may be a, a timing issue that we get a better price if we had a bigger window, you know, I'd like to get this done
Yeah.
this calendar year, but it may be that it goes into a year from now. You know, maybe the work window is not December twenty-two, it's April twenty-three or May or June.
Sound View's the biggest project that's out there right now. Okay.
Yeah, and, and I, I like to talk in analogies and sometimes they're not good ones, but, but the, the patching, you have to look down the road. This, this isn't a, you know, it's like, it's a process, it's a step, they, they do the patching and then it may be a year, two, three years later, they'll come back and do the overlay. But the idea is to trying to, to get to all the streets that we can in the best, if we were to just spend, if we were just to do one section of road at whatever cost, then the other streets are suffering. And so if, if the other streets are at an eighty percent and we do these patch and maybe they're at eighty-five, you know, we're, we're working the way up. It's, it's kind of like if you have, if you're painting a wall and you, you don't, don't spackle, you don't have a good project. This is kind of like the spackling before the painting. I don't know if that was a good analogy or a bad one, but.
I, I can relate to it.
The individual dots on our maps are really, sort of generalized, they've been field-marked at these locations for the bidders, right?
That's correct. Yeah, they're, that's right, there's a, a kind of a spreadsheet that has all of these locations and all of the measurements and quantities and so forth.
And then some of these locations probably will require them to close both lanes, don't you think? Most likely, South Awgwood, maybe.
I think so. Yeah.
And then if they close one lane and leave the other one open, are they allowed to leave it like that overnight?
No, they're supposed to, they're supposed to start and finish.
Okay. And then I guess the only other question, when it says adjustment of manholes, meter boxes, and valve boxes, it says cast iron or steel fittings will not be permitted for the adjustment of man, I don't quite understand that.
Well, if you don't, then I probably don't either. Let me.
Well, there's two listed in the
Yeah, where are the two manholes? I was curious about that, too.
Do you have any?
Does anybody know?
I didn't think we had any.
I didn't think, I'm like
I don't recall any, but.
It might be a difference, like it's a catch-all, it says adjustment of manholes, too. Line items twelve.
I can get that clarified before this goes out. I mean, it shouldn't be, I mean, if it's a catch-all, it shouldn't be because if we don't have them, we don't have them.
I was just wondering whether they're intending to use other than cast iron or steel. I mean, they're specing like galvanized steel, but that's still steel. That's my only question. And the only, well, the other question I had is, this is probably a much larger contract than our bidders are normally used to looking at. I'm sure some of this is boilerplate, DOT, stuff that they are used to looking at in other projects. The size and depth of this contract's not going to spook.
Yeah, that's what I've, it's larger than we've normally provided, actually. Of course, we're only based on a small segment then, when we're doing a complete rebuild.
Most of it looks to be boilerplate.
Yeah.
I think most of it is, and there's probably some section of, of this that could come out. When we spoke to the, to local folks, that didn't seem to be
Okay.
a deterrent.
Normally, they're looking at really specific engineering plans and then a couple spec sheets and then that's it, but.
That, that may be something we learned from this, is that we don't need all, all of that, all of this.
Doesn't hurt to start where we are, though. So that was my question, just itemization of the individual repairs, how clear that would be to the bidders. And then I am curious about the manholes. I think it's probably stormwater grate, but rather than an actual manhole.
You know, based on the turnout when CEPI presented this, what, three people at the meeting?
Two, right there.
Well, yeah, two right here. So to make a long, I think, good education program here. I, I mean, to let the citizens, I mean, when you see this many jobs going on, I can see two perceptions out there, wow, they really are trying to fix or why are they just patching?
Right.
Why aren't they going whole hog and completing the whole thing? So I, I think we just need to be very cognizant of that and make sure that our education, we, now we try, but just make sure those folks know, I think it'll be good when they see so many streets being, at least being addressed with the patching and with this and, and it's the long, and also I think more importantly, it's the long term of this to keep the streets at, what'd you say, eighty-five percent? If we can keep them all eighty-five percent presentable
In the, in the
over a period of time, I think it goes a long way. It says we're addressing the problem, we think, that's in a new way as well. So I, I'd say it's a positive, I really do.
I definitely think we should all be prepared to answer questions, like Mark just said, you know, phone calls, because this is a completely different approach to streets from what we have done in the past. And you're going to have to probably be able to explain it to people that, you know, you run into at the grocery store or whatever and, and essentially, like you just said, Mark, educate them on, we're going, this is trying something new.
Do our best.
Yeah, and the reasons we're trying something new is this, you know. I guess I just had one que, is that twelve-month guarantee, is that also just a standard boilerplate? That, that, that's what CEPI language uses?
Standard warranty.
Yeah, standard warranty, okay. So I guess we'll fi, figure out next steps after we have the pre-bid or the bid.
For the notification, as Mark was saying, I mean, can we do, is it too much challenge for y'all to do like a live pro, project map like you're planning to do for Beach Nurishment? Even if it was a real rudimentary? Certain dots active, you know?
It's a good idea, I think we can.
And then how much, I didn't really read through every line of this, how much notification do they have to give you about where they're working in town at a certain time? Like if they're going to start milling Sound View, can they show up Monday mornings? I mean, I don't think they will, but could they theoretically under this, show up and start milling it without giving you a heads up to notify?
No.
Then, then you mentioned you, that this street project, there is going to be a, a live map application where you could
It's not live, but it can, I think
Or what a resident can access it, find out where, what's going to happen on our street and sort of when, and when activity is starting. I thought I
Yeah, that, that, that map will indicate, you can go right now and see what's scheduled in front of your house.
Yeah.
But somehow I'd like to add to that, the work that's being done as part of this project is where they are and when they'll be in front of you. Kind, kind of like the Beach Nurishment.
Right, right, so we got some work being done on it. What was their clause, their forty-eight hours notice before they work on a, on a project?
I know that applies to a lane closure.
Yeah. That's what it said.
Okay.
The lane closure, but
Is that just lane closure?
They have to get your approval for a full, full road closure. I don't, I mean, it's a small community, I don't think they're just going to show up and start grinding pavement without telling you, David or somebody, but I was just to leave you a, your concern.
I, I think that needs to be The state does.
Yeah.
Well, we, we can coordinate with the Sound View folks directly.
Yeah.
And we'll try and do a, a good job with notifying everyone else generally.
And Hickory is getting a full overlay, aren't they? A repave? The E-Sickery? Yeah.
It says repave.
Yeah.
Anyway, just identify the high-impact areas.
Okay.
I mean, if it's isolated patching here and there, I don't think it's as critical. They're going to be staged there for more than afternoon. Probably worthwhile.
Any other questions for Cliff?
No, I'd like to make a motion to adopt or approve the advertisement for bids.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion by council? Free to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you, Cliff. Our second business item is consideration of Dominion Power easement Phase Two Underground Project, page one thirteen in your packet. Members?
So this, this simply is a, a easement that Dominion Power has requested from the town because you'll see in your packet, the, the easement goes under South Awgwood, about a hundred and seventy-five feet south of View Pond Trail, and it's simply a, a bore under the road. feet south of Buopon Trail, and it's simply a, a bore under the road so that the poles at, I think it was 100, was it 109 and 112? Let's dig at that. There's two existing poles still.
162.
Thank you. Those two poles will come down, and then all the poles in this area will be, well, there won't be any poles, everything will be underground. This is, those two are the last remaining. When I spoke to Dominion, they thought this work would start in about a month and a half, but the actual poles may be up, and the, and the, the power line may be up longer than that, for whatever reason. It may take longer to get those down than it does to get the line underneath. This should be a quick, relatively simple job.
That finishes the project, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the right of way agreement with Dominion Energy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, council?
It's positive.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Our third business item, consideration of resolution 22-03-02 authorizing the process of collection of the remaining beach nourishment easements, page 120 in your packet, council. Cliff?
So as part of the process of getting the easements that we, the outstanding easements that we don't have yet, and out of 136 easements we needed, I think we have all but 13. I, and I've said it before, hopefully I'm not wrong, but I think we'll still get a majority of those, but some we may not. And so, in order to get these easements before the project starts, we have to go through this process. And in, and the first step in that process is for you all to pass this resolution so that the town attorney, if you'll see in the, the four, now therefore be resolved, there are four actions there that you're authorizing myself or the town attorney to take. And the, the first one just simply allows us to proceed in this process. The second one allows three methods by which we can secure the legal right to do this project in front of these houses. Hopefully, we still get these voluntarily. If we don't, then we go through a, a process to confirm, other than condemnation or eminent domain, that the, a legal decision that says that the, we have the right to do this project, that through litigation confirming public authority to perform the 22 beach nourishment project upon the ocean beaches of the town. And that would just simply be a, a legal court judge says you can do the project, and that becomes the legal document. And then the third is the one I hope we don't have to go through, is the use of eminent domain. And then the third, it simply states that the, what you're authorizing is the easement to, if necessary, for the purposes of doing the project. Nothing else than to be able to, to nourish the beach in the same easement area that the voluntary easements for. And then the fourth is finally, you've just agreed to, once we record it, to accept the easement through this process. So this is something that we got to get going on. You know, the, the next process, if you all approve this, would be a letter from the attorney putting the, these owners on notice that we're starting this process. And then they have the opportunity to either voluntarily sign, or they can, they can answer that letter by a challenge. But then ultimately, you know, we'll, we will get the easement, and we'll be able to do the project, but we'll have to discuss the legal proceedings on beyond the project. So we need, in order to get going, this is a resolution that you're being asked to approve.
Have we had actual verbal contact with them, and they pretty much said no, but go somewhere else?
No one's told me that. I mean, I, I think there's a couple that are, have concern. I, I don't know that we'll get all of these, I think we will be challenged. But the most, and I've, I think I've spoken to all but one, and I'm just getting the indication that it's there, and they'll get to it. I just, I just hate for them to get to it because they got a letter from the attorney.
And, and I've talked to a number of people also, because I volunteered to, and Cliff, I'll, I'll be happy to contact the remaining people. The pushback I've gotten recently is that the county took away my property rights for two months, and now they're asking to take more of my property rights. And it's more of a, you know, kind of ethical stand that because they were prohibited from going to their property for two months, and they.
Down to principle.
It's on principle. I, I think Cliff has also offered to modify the easements for people and not do them in perpetuity, but do it for five years, the scope of the project. I think Cliff has offered to modify it to address any concern that somebody might have. It's a very de minimis infringement on your property. So, but I, I'll make one last stand at talking to folks.
Two, two thoughts. I mean, the condemnation is more aggressive than them voluntarily granting us an easement. And are they aware of that when you talk to them? So they just want to push it down the road? The other thing is, the town is expending a lot of money to fortify the property for them as well.
And a condemnation will be in perpetuity.
Yeah, that's what I understand, it's.
It will also cost them money, correct? They will have legal fees associated with that if they.
If they fight it, now whether the judge would assess them any fees, I don't know. I mean, if they hire an attorney, obviously, it's.
Is the attorney's letter ready to go?
I believe so.
Yeah, I'd say get them out quickly.
Okay.
Because you've got the letter process, then you've got the court process. You may get the judge to expedite any kind of hearing. However, once the suit is filed, there's a periods, probably 30 days that they'll have, so you're, you know, it's rolling out there, right?
How's the letter being sent? Regular mail or certified?
Certified.
Certified.
Yeah, I, I think Ben gets it. He, he wanted to have this approved at your first meeting in the month, but we decided it needed to be on an agenda and discussed. And so he, I think, he, he gets the timing of it.
Yeah, and perhaps we can, by approving this resolution today, perhaps that's the, the indication for Ben that we really want this done sooner rather than later.
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for Cliff or comments?
I would imagine you're going to try to reach out to them ahead of time and say, this is coming.
Yep, I, I've been able to do that with a few, and I got, I actually got two that way.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll make one, one last, this, this may be the last time you hear from me.
Yeah.
Most likely will be.
You know, and my phone calls have been, I'm on the council, and I'm also one of your neighbors, and I understand some of the concerns that you have. You know, I just think some people have to go to the wire. You ready for a motion?
Yeah, anyone like to make a motion?
Okay, I move that we adopt resolution 2022-0302 authorizing the process of collection for the remaining beach nourishment easements.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thanks, council. Thank you, Cliff, very much. Last item on our agenda is council comments. Leo, would you like to kick us off?
No, I don't have any this morning.
Okay.
I've got a tourism board meeting Thursday morning, so.
Next, Mark.
I, I'm going to attempt to see, and maybe, Cliff, I think you were having a contact with Leo, I'm going to attempt to bring up our resolution for the bridge there.
Oh, please.
Yes, that's a really good idea. Thanks, Leo. Mark, do you have any comments?
Nope.
Matt? Anything? Ms. Paula?
I'm going, I'm hoping to attend a fiscal training meeting that's sponsored by the State Treasury Department. It's next Tuesday in Hertford, for about three hours. It's specifically for municipalities. Thank you. It's free.
It's free.
Other near mileage.
We look forward to hearing any highlights you can share with us later, later time. I appreciate that.
Well, I have to tell you, it's kind of a full circle thing for me, because my grandparents lived in Hertford, and I think as a little girl, I never thought I would go back to Hertford for anything.
It's changed.
Like this, but yeah, it's kind of a full circle.
That's fun. That's great.
Nothing free in this world.
I was just going to share, I was able to take a, a brief tour yesterday of the new COA campus in Manio. And if you haven't availed yourself of that opportunity, our very own Southern Shores resident is the dean of the campus, his name is Tim Sweeney. I'm sure he would welcome a request from any, or any of y'all who are interested. It is, it is truly a cutting edge educational facility, and I think it's going to be a real draw for people who want to start new kinds of careers, maybe change careers, or maybe get their, their college credits without having to go away. So it's really, I think it's going to be, plus a nice place for the community to gather, good outdoor space that'll be really nice once the grass starts growing. Anyway, it's very impressive. I think, I think it's a huge addition to the town of Mantio as well. It is really, it's just gorgeous, and they rehabbed the, the older building, which now looks just like the new building, so it looks like we got two new buildings, but it, they just have done a really good job. And considering the time that they've been doing this, the challenges that, that they have had, had to address are just amazing. So that was really good. Thank you all. Our next meeting is in April, and the date is?
April 5.
April 5. It'd be a regular Town Council 5:30 PM meeting. Thank you all. I will now adjourn.